For Thursday, September 21st, 2023. It's nice to see everybody here today. Thanks for joining us. We are missing two council members. They are excused and they are away, but they will be here next time. So Councilmember Oaks and Councilmember Jackson are out of town. All right. So I will be doing the opening and then I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And for my opening, I'm just going to make a quick comment about Constitution Month. We passed a resolution declaring Constitution Month last council meeting. And my daughter had the opportunity to speak in church about the Constitution. And it was so interesting. Her talk kind of focused around choices and decisions that we make and how they impact us. And we might realize they're big at the time. We might think that they're small at the time, but it does impact us. The decisions that we make, the things that we do, impact those around us potentially for generations. And so it's made me really think about decisions and choices and just making sure that we go about our lives doing things so that we can look back and be proud or at least pleased with the things that we've done. So with that, I will just offer a quick prayer. Our dear Heavenly Father, we're so thankful for this opportunity we have to serve our community here in Kaseville. We ask you to please bless us with safety and peace and prosperity for those within our community and those that we serve. We ask you to please bless us that we'll make decisions that are wise and good and just and fair. Please bless us to be kind and to be empathetic with one another and to look for ways to serve each other. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. We have one individual signed up for public comment, Rick Madsen. You're welcome to come up. You'll have three minutes. There'll be a timer and your microphone will turn off at the three-minute mark. So please come on over. Come on up.
Right here?
Right here. Thank you.
My name is Rick Madsen. I live in Kaseville. I walk my dog every day, twice a day, actually, in the Quell Park area. It's on the very southwest part of Kaseville. And it's on the Quell Park. If you guys know where that is. And as I'm walking my dog, there's a sidewalk that I walk him on. On one side of the sidewalk, the park is just filled with weeds and they go through the mowing machine a couple of times through the season, but it's just a bunch of weeds. On the other side, we got a nice lawn where kids can play soccer and have fun and all that stuff. So on the one side, there's probably a good, maybe an acre and a half of land that is just, like I say, weeds. And I had an idea that if we could just fence along the sidewalk and have between two and four different places where you could enter with your dog, you could just put them in on one side, do your little walk, and meet your dog on the other side and continue with your walk. It would be a really nice place. And we take our dog twice a day. And occasionally, we, our dog is the type of dog that has to run. And some dogs just have to run. You have to run some of these dogs. And ours is one of those type of dogs. So when we go there, we always take our dog out leash. And then there's somebody else who's walking their dog with a leash. And there's been a few times, there's one Bree in particular, she'll grab her little dog and hold him and, "Get your dog on a leash." You know, we don't ask because we have our dog on a leash. It's like, oh, our dog's never bitten another dog, never bitten a person. He's a nice dog. People never do that. But nobody knows that when a dog that big comes running up, you get a little teeny dog, and it freaks people out. But if we had a park where we could just have people do that now. One of the ideas here, I think, maybe one of the things we might run into is that, well, the city doesn't have the budget to do this, and I have a way to get us to be able to pay for that. And maybe not 100%, maybe not right away, and maybe we could get somebody to donate materials or time or something, and I'd be okay to take charge of that, put some things together. I'm retired, I've been retired for eight months now. And I'd be okay to take over on that if that's, if these things are done. But I'm thinking we could have little machines that you could go up, if you are like a citizen of the city and you're going to take your dog there regularly, you might want to pay, I'm just making numbers up here, $30 a year. And then you get a little code kind of thing like that, you swipe and you get to go in because you're all paid up. And if you're just somebody who's visiting the area, you could take your credit card and swipe and pay a buck. But every time you enter, you're going to be having to have some sort of economic connection to it. You have to pay for it. So I just thought, yeah, that'd be a good way, you know, that we could get that to get paid for it. Don't know, I haven't, I haven't come up to any numbers. If you guys say, hey, it sounds like a great idea, give us some numbers, give us some whatever, maps, I'd be more than happy to do that. I just don't know where to start except, um, see where it goes from there. Any questions?
We don't have any questions, but we'll reach out to you. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you so much. That's, that's actually a really, that's a fantastic idea, and we love volunteers, so.
Yeah.
Watch out.
I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Okay. First item of business is a proclamation recognizing Public Power Week, October 1st through 7th, a week-long celebration of Kaseville's power and light, year-round service to Kaseville City. So I'll hurry and read this. Whereas Kaseville City places a high value on being able to operate a community-owned, not-for-profit electric utility, we are citizens who are customers and owners of our electric utility, have a direct say in utility operations and policies. Whereas Kaseville Power and Light provides our homes, businesses, schools, and social service, and local government agencies with reliable, efficient, and safe electricity, employing sound business practices designed to ensure the best possible service at not-for-profit rates. Whereas Kaseville Power and Light is a valuable community asset that contributes to the well-being of local citizens through energy efficiency, customer service, environmental protection, economic development, and safety awareness. Whereas Kaseville Power and Light is a dependable and trustworthy institution whose local operation provides many consumer protections and continues to make our community a better place to live and work, and contributes to protecting the global environment. Now therefore be it resolved that Kaseville Power and Light will continue to work to bring low-cost, safe, reliable, and sustainable electricity to community homes and businesses just as it has since 1908, the year when the utility was created to serve all the citizens of Kaseville. Be it further resolved that the week of October 1st through 7th, 2023, be designated Public Power Week to recognize the people behind Public Power at Kaseville Power and Light for their contributions to the community and to educate customer owners, policymakers, and employees of the benefits of public power. So therefore be it resolved that our community joins hands with more than 2,000 public power systems in the United States in the celebration of public power, which puts our residents, businesses, and our community before profits. So there's that. We're excited about that. Now we have a, an employee award. It's the Employee of the Quarter Award, being awarded to Dan Jessup. We will turn the time over to his boss manager, Melinda, to present this. Thank you, Melinda.
Thanks, Mayor. So let me tell you a little story.
Oh, yes.
I, before I even applied for my job here, I had a conversation with Shane Scott, our former city manager. And he said that Dan is not the kind of guy that would have any enemies, but if he did, he'd be able to talk to that enemy and turn him around into a best friend within a matter of minutes. I have found that to be true. It's definitely one of Mr. Jessup's skill sets. He's very skilled at dealing with people who aren't happy, which happens a lot in community development, whether it's zoning issues or we're telling people things that they can and can't do with their property. So like I said, that's a skill set that has been, I think, widely known, one of, a great value to the city. I want to just share a couple of other things with Dan, or about Dan too, but Dan is always willing to learn, which is appreciated because things are always changing in the community development arena. We have laws that change, we have state laws that change, case laws. He's always willing to learn, and I have found Dan, in all honesty, to be one of the most intelligent people I have worked with. I think when you're really smart, learning is fun, so that probably contributes to his willingness to learn. Dan's been with the city for 31 years now. So he also has a wealth of institutional knowledge that's a great asset to the city. He's previously worked as a building inspector and also in our public works department and on water lines and construction projects. So he has a lot of knowledge about the city, what's happened over the last 30 years, and that comes in handy more frequently than you might imagine. And then lastly, I just wanted to say that Dan, he might not appreciate me saying this, but Dan is an awesome artist, and we always love seeing his artwork around the office. And when people depart us and go on for other opportunities, he makes sure that they're leaving with a nice piece of artwork. And then this is the part that he really might not appreciate, but Dan's one of the kindest-hearted people you'll ever come across. And so collectively, we really enjoy having Dan here. We're glad he's part of the city. And I guess that's really all I had, but Dan probably wants to give a speech.
Come on down, Dan.
I don't even know what to say, I'm blank, but I have worked here 31 years. Justin Page brought out a book today. It's like 94. So I'd been here two years and it's showing the, it's a Christmas party we had. To be honest with you, I haven't had a good Christmas party since it quit so in cars, but. But we had a Christmas party and they had a book and it, you go through there and shows everybody that worked there. And I was laughing at it because it was about half in and there's like six pictures on every department. We used to run lean and mean, they used to say.
job. He was super kind and super helpful, so firsthand experience.
And I think the fact is, as we still do, and I think the fact that the reason the city works so well is everybody does do their job. Everybody works hard to make everybody else look good.
Okay.
And we do that, and we're just family.
All right. Now I'll turn the time over to Nancy Tippett to present Wreaths Across America.
We've always been family. And so I just want to appreciate everybody that nominated me.
Come on down, Nancy.
I feel like I'm really close to you guys.
And I just have had a great career here, and I love this place. Thank you.
I don't know why.
Thank you, Dan. Well, we want to get a picture with you.
So Wreaths Across America Blue is sponsored in Kaseville by Blue Star Families of Utah. And we are a nonprofit organization that helps current active-duty family members, veteran families, and Gold Star families. We put together activities, we have a big activity tomorrow in Farmington Station that's all day welcoming new families. And when they started Wreaths Across America, I thought, I've got to be in on this because my father is buried there, who was killed in Vietnam, and my stepfather is buried there, and my daughter is buried there, and my granddaughter is buried there. And I have walked those roads for 100 years, it seems like. So it was, it was, felt really good for me to be able to volunteer to do this. And I'm just the location coordinator. We have about 1,350 veterans that are buried in that cemetery and some very old pioneer veterans. Last year, we were able to do about 250 graves. It's, it's actually sponsored, so people can get on our website. You each have a flyer that you can go, get on and buy a wreath, and it's, you can either donate it generally, or you can donate it to a specific family member. These wreaths are all handmade back in Maine, and they're made from November 1st until they ship out two days before our event. And they travel all the way across country by semi-truck, and they come and they drop boxes off. And there's nine wreaths in each box, and we undo them. And Trent has been really good to help us and to, to work with us to let us do that. And we are grateful. We have the, usually Northridge High School, RTC comes and does the flag ceremony. Our only concern, and I'm going to put a pitch in for a new light, is because they're in their dress uniforms and they're in these slick shoes, and they have to get up on this concrete in the middle of December. And I scrape it off as best I can, but it's, it's kind of scary to get up there and to post the flag. I mean, I've, I've been posting the flag. I did it this last time, the, on 9/11. And it's easy to do when it's not snowing and it's not rainy, but you get up on those, on that painted concrete bench, it's really scary. And I suggested to Trent, if we could move the lot, the flagpole down in the middle of that round flower bed, it would be a whole lot easier for them to get to and do the flag ceremony, or for anybody. I mean, for generations to come, it would be a whole lot less, I, I just always worry about somebody slipping and falling off that thing. But it's a, it's a good program. I've really enjoyed doing it. I've done it, this is my third year to do it. Any questions?
We just appreciate your willing, your willingness to continue. It is really neat. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thanks, Nancy, and thanks for the chocolate.
Yes, thank you for the chocolate. Thank you, thank you. All right. I'll now turn the time over to Cole, to Michelle, who is the chair for our Parks and Rec Committee, to talk about Parks and Rec and prevent, present the annual report.
All righty. Thanks, you guys. Thanks, Cole, for letting us tag team this presentation. It is really fun to be on this side of a city council meeting. It's very good to see you all. I'm just going to give you a little update. I think it's kind of fun to see all the different efforts that go on in the cities, particularly volunteer boards. I think that's where a lot of the work gets done, and it's really fun to hear from probably different perspectives. So I'm just going to give a really brief overview of some of the, of an introduction of our board, and what we do, and kind of our priorities, and things we're looking forward to. And there we go. So here's this fantastic picture and a fantastic sun that we're looking straight into, but this was a fun, this was just a couple of weeks ago, you guys were all there. This is almost our whole board. We have Desi Carney, David Moore, Chris Layton, myself, Michelle Barber, Liesel McMurray, that guy, I can't remember, somebody, John Adams, and Cole Stevens. And that picture, it is Mitch Arquette, but because he wasn't in the picture, I had to drag him physically here tonight, so you actually get to hear from him. I'm super excited about that. But this was really fun. This was up at the Wilderness Park parking lot ribbon-cutting ceremony. We're going to talk about that in a little bit, but that's our board. This was just an application process you guys are probably familiar with, and I just have to give a huge shout out to all of these people. They volunteer, they come, they're really from different demographics throughout the city, and in my opinion, exactly what a community board should be. So purpose and goals, you guys are probably already familiar with this. It's kind of fun. I was a part of the group that we put together, this Parks and Rec Advisory Board, when I was on council a few years ago. And the idea, and I'll read the, the technical definition, but the idea is basically, we realized, the mayor and council, you hear so many requests. There's so many things you, you have to look at, and budgets are overwhelming, and it's hard to really know priorities and what residents want. And I would never try to say that I can represent all residents or even one board, but the goal is that this board can be an advisory committee. Yeah, just say, we've done a lot of research, things that you guys probably have outside of your purview, because you have so many other things to look at, and we can really be focused. So it's been a really fun thing to be part of. It says, "The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board functions as a planning, advisory, and coordinating body for the city in matters pertaining to parks and recreation plans and programs. Their efforts are coordinated with the Parks and Recreation Department. Any actions or proposed actions are submitted through the city staff before being proposed to the city council for consideration." So we work really closely with Cole. His other staff will come to quite a few of our meetings, and we just can't say enough about how well Parks and Rec is staffed here in Kaseville City. We are so lucky. The board is made up of seven members, all of whom reside in the city for at least one year prior to their appointment. Appointments are non-political, and members are selected from a variety of different vocational interests. Each member serves a four-year term. So anyway, that's kind of how it's been made up, and it's actually really fun to just kind of get people who can deep dive into one area. And in my opinion, this is the most fun area of the whole city. So it's been really fun. I'm just going to go through a few, a few of our priorities as a board. This is not everything that we've consulted on. Like I said, we don't make any decisions. We basically have zero power, but we do have the influence of city staff and council. We have John Adams as our liaison, and he is fantastic. He comes, he represents you guys very well as a city council. He adds comedic relief and just a lot of excitement. I think he's, he's the perfect appointment, and I hope he gets to stay on this. All right. So cemetery update. I know that this picture does not look like a cemetery, right? And I should add, we actually assigned out different pieces of all of this presentation to the entire board, and we had good assignments, right? Everybody had assignments. And then, piece by piece, people had conflicts come up. So I'm sorry you're having to hear a lot from me, but to the board that's watching at home or later, thank you so much. Everybody else went, we went about the city and took different pictures and put perspectives. So I realize this does not look like a cemetery. It is not technically part of the cemetery itself, but this is a really exciting, flat piece of dirt that you guys are looking at right now. So excited. This is behind the city offices there, or sorry, the cemetery office there. And just a huge shout out to, once again, Cole and his staff. Trent, that's just the best ever there at the cemetery. They realized there was a space behind that has the potential to do something to really serve. And so when Cole brought this to our board, we kind of brainstormed a lot and thought about what this could mean to be a space that could be actually used by the city, or sorry, by residents, people that come to the city to visit their loved ones who are at the cemetery. So it, not very long ago was full of weeds and some trees and stuff. She didn't get as close to pictures I was hoping, but one of the biggest parts of the project has been putting up that really big retaining wall between this piece of land, leveling it out, and the neighborhood to the side of it. It's one of those projects that really, no one's going to get excited about when they drive by, but really necessary. So thank you, Nicole. I think it came in under budget, can I say that? Which is fantastic. So now we have this awesome opportunity, and we're going to talk about a few things that are goals to be put on here. I think everybody's kind of heard about the goal for the Angel of Hope statue. I think this, that the calls came to our board about a year, maybe quite a year ago, but they came quite a while ago. I think we were their kind of first stop in Kaseville. Maybe they talked to some of you guys before, and they came to one of our meetings and presented this idea of the Angel of Hope statue. And it was really kind of a serendipitous moment, because I had not really heard about the light, the city, the cemetery expansion. I think we might have talked about it a little bit, and Cole just kind of had the idea. He's very good at just kind of being neutral of ideas and saying, you know, we are doing this. We're kind of at a perfect spot. We have this piece of land that we, we wanted to do something really meaningful for the city, and the family was so excited. You guys have probably seen, Kaseville's amazing. We knew fundraising wouldn't be a problem for something so meaningful, but really, you know, and on top of fundraising itself, it's having the space available and having a cemetery staff that was willing to put somewhere out there. So this is going to be an awesome, the family wasn't able to come tonight, but you guys have all kind of seen about that. So this has been a fun thing to be part of. I think there's some other really great things we can do to that space for people to have, you know, an area of, you know, reflection, and just somewhere to, to visit that Kaseville can be really proud of. Our cemetery is amazing, as you all know. This next part is really fun. This is, we're calling it the Kaseville Junior High Possible Partnership. Possible being very important word up there. But we actually had another council member, Gil Miller, who was assigned to speak on this, and he had a very good reason come up. He's having twins being born in Brexburg right now, so. He wrote a statement that-
Grandkid twins.
Grandkid twins. Nice to say kids. Sorry, Gil. Not ready to start rumors here, and he's having grandkids born, which is really exciting. And if it's okay, Mayor, I'm just going to read the statement that he sent, which is really fun. So just to give a little background about this. He said, these are, this is Gil's statement. "Part of the presentation tonight will address an eventual upcoming request from the Davis County School District to have the city participate in the rebuild of the Kaseville Junior High Gymnasium. Their request will be similar to the one they made many years ago as Centennial Junior High was being designed. That request, as we all, as the new, as the new proposal for KJH will likely do, asks the city to pay for a portion of the enlarged gymnasium far bigger than possible, except, except for the participation of the city. The enlarged gymnasium would be available for the city's recreation department to use when the school is not in session. The partnership will make a major impact on the city's shortage of recreational facilities and will, and in keeping with the single most requested demand of the recreation department from the citizen survey. Years ago, the council voted three to two to not participate in a partnership with the district to enlarge the gymnasium at Central Junior High. The outcome has been regretted by both the district and the Parks and Recreation Department since that time. While my vote was not in agreement with the outcome at the time," he's talking about his vote when he sat on city council, "I now relish the opportunity to not let this partnership pass by again. I urge you to seriously consider the district bang-for-the-buck proposal when it comes to fund this ever-present need. The project may be funded in part with ramp dollars, but I suspect monies will still need to come from other taxpayer funds. Please don't let the city make the same mistake again." So thank you, Gil, for that statement. I think it's really fun to have people on this board with all different perspectives. His is particularly applicable in this case. I think his statement speaks for itself, and to anyone listening, this is a very far down-the-road proposal. It's not, it's not an immediate thing, but I don't think it is ever too early to get it on the radar. And as we're going to talk about a little bit later, I do realize things require funding, and it's expensive, but the way you do that is you plan and you listen to your citizens, which is, I think, what we're doing here. Wilderness Park, hey, most of you are there in this beautiful, very washed-out picture of the beautiful sun that was there. This was just a fun thing. This is a really good example, something that was fun to be part of. Cole kept our board really up to date, and even trying to discuss all the different ways to pay for this, this expansion. I think I can speak for everyone here that was there. It's really cool to see a project like this that benefits so many people and is paid for by a lot of different entities. Several years ago, when I was helping run the ramp tax campaign, I felt so strongly that Kaseville was just underserved with things like this. Kaseville needed it, and I knew that it might be a chance to bring our community together. And so things like this will continue to serve, and I know that that is a very small funding source. I wish it was 100 times bigger than it is, but it's not. But I think it could be a proving ground for what's important to fund. These are some other pictures. Liesel McMurray, thank you. She's from our board. She went and took a bunch of pictures. She also hikes this area all the time. I know Cole has some proposals of even better things that we can do for trail connectivity up there, and I would give a huge plug for that, because you will not find something that I think serves our purpose even better. Recreation community events. Finally, you get a break from hearing from me, you guys. And we're going to have Mitch Arquette take over this part.
Just to touch quickly on the potential, their relationship with Davis School District and the gymnasium. My experience has been a high school athletic director and currently is a district athletic director, and those facilities are used 24/7. If we have the funds or the availability to plan for them in the future, I think it would be a very wise and prudent decision. So I get to talk about what's happening in Kaseville Parks and Rec. As I mentioned, our greatest needs right now are more court space. If we do have the opportunity, availability to get more courts, it will drastically improve our situation. Seasonal and full-time staff. This is very important to me, as I've lived in Kaseville for close to, I think, 80% of my life. I was once a junior jazz official and baseball official, and it was a big impact in my life. Kind of geared me and pushed me towards my profession and the passions and hobbies that I have. And as we talked about, more space anywhere for fields, trails, and whatnot. Some of our programs we have been going through, currently right now, we have our family's supersport that was recognized, I believe, by the Utah Parks and Rec Association for the activity where families get together weekly and participate in things like kickball and dodgeball, or, excuse me, pickleball and basketball, and, and they do it, you know, every Monday night for an hour for eight weeks? Eight weeks, which has been really good, and we're excited about that. Our other big thing right now, Moms and Sons, last, two weekends ago, where they were Gailey Park and- a very wise and prudent decision. So I get to talk about what's happening in Kaysville Parks and Rec. As I mentioned, our greatest needs right now are more court space. If we do have the opportunity, availability to get more courts, it will drastically improve our situation. Seasonal and full-time staff. This is very important to me as I've lived in Kaysville for close to, I think, 80% of my life. I was once a junior jazz official and baseball official and it was a big impact in my life. Kind of geared me and pushed me towards my profession and the passions and hobbies that I have. And as we talked about, more space anywhere for fields, trails and whatnot. Some of our programs we have been going through, currently right now, we have our family's super sport that was recognized, I believe by the Utah Parks and Rec Association for the activity where families get together weekly and participate in things like kickball and dodgeball, or excuse me, pickleball and basketball. And they do it, you know, every Monday night for an hour for eight weeks? Eight weeks, which has been really good. We're excited about that. Our other big thing right now, Moms and Sons, last, two weekends ago, where they were Gailey Park and fortunately my wife and my son were planning on going, but my wife fell ill. Some of our future projects, am I, is this my deal?
Yeah.
Excellent. Okay. Basketball courts and trail improvements. With the necessity for basketball courts, we are looking at three, at three tournaments. It was an adult night or adult basketball league. I'm not as familiar with the trails. Cole, do you want to talk about that?
Sure.
Okay.
Howard, you finish-
Okay, I'll finish up mine and then we'll bring Cole back up. General Plan Land Use Survey. This is not me. You want to go back? Okay. Okay. That is my portion.
Go backwards. So the basketball courts, just to give you an update on the ones at Barnes Park, that was a ramp funded project this year. The courts have actually been poured. They're now just sitting, first tension concrete, just sitting, waiting for the period of time that they got to dry before the service can be put on. So like Mitch said, that's where the plan there is to form some leagues. It can be outdoor leagues to kind of make that gap where we don't have indoor courts. We can use some outdoor courts. Those will also have lights. So the wilderness park with the parking lot project and it was funded via ramp, Davis County ATP, Active Transportation and the state grant, kind of acting as a central trailhead for the Bonneville Shoreline Trail. And so this year, the council approved some funding for us to go and do some improvements to some trails to make those bigger and better and just more connectivity up there. So that's ongoing, along with finishing up the parking lot project with some landscaping that's currently underway. So those are the things will be happening throughout the remainder of this year with these probably our two main projects we've got going on this year. So.
All right. This next portion, I know you're all very familiar with, but I would be remiss if I didn't reference the 2020, 2021 general plan land use survey that Kaysville City put out. It was probably one of the best executed ways of getting voice from the residents. It's actually was the emphasis for really wanting to make sure we had a ramp tax on there. As I didn't put a slide in there for that, but there was a huge support for that and I felt like at some point, you almost feel neglectful as a representative if you're not responding to what residents are asking for. And so that worked out really well. High interest for a recreation center. I think you guys all know that very well. It's four out of five respondents are somewhat interested in a public recreation center. I think that speaks for itself. Obviously, it's a huge investment, but they even put like a dollar amount that residents were able to, were willing to commit, which I had never seen a public outreach survey do before. I thought that was really fantastic. Residents use parks often. I love this part. We didn't talk as much about our parks. I think Cole will talk a little bit there, but that's something Kaysville City does exceptionally well and I think has proven that it's one of the things that makes Kaysville such a highly sought after place to live. Demand for trails and open spaces. This is one of the reasons I feel really thankful to be part on this committee where we have another one that I'm going to talk about in a minute, but it's fun to see actually meeting those needs, you know, making the parking lot more accessible, connecting trails eventually. As I think you guys all know, those trail systems, there's a plan to connect all of this northern Utah together and how cool that Kaysville can be a piece of that right there. And interest for athletic courts, playgrounds. I didn't put the slide on here, but as you well know, there's high, high interest for a pool. I didn't put that pool on, that slide on here. Bike parks, there's dog parks as well, as we heard from a resident. Skate parks, all sorts of things. So I don't think this demand is going to go anywhere, but if we've seen just kind of the way that the world is trending, people are wanting to be more active, more part of their community and I think it's fantastic. Trappers Field update. I think you guys are familiar with this park. I have a lot of connection to this park. I'm really proud of it. I know it looks like just a big patch of green underneath some power lines, but a couple of years ago, it was a really underutilized area of the city with a huge backstory, but now it is what we call a passive park where people can just go and enjoy, kick a football with their fam, uh, kick a soccer ball with their family. I tried to zoom in. There's actually a park bench. When I was on council, we had someone who got to name the park. She didn't want her name on the bench, but she wanted to talk about just the history of, you know, people that were here long, long before us. So that's the south side. So if you imagine going down Schick Lane, right below 200 North in Kaysville, the south side is looking fantastic. Thank you so much to Cole's staff. They worked really hard. It's come along really beautiful, almost exactly according to the plan that we had put there. So that's awesome. And then there's the north side, which is-
A work in progress.
Yeah. It needs a little TLC and I think you guys know this, but this is a huge high priority. Our council, or sorry, our board, sorry, has looked at the proposals that came from you guys. If the city was made of money, we could make this thing like amazing. I know that we are not. I know that we have constraints, but I also know that we have this opportunity to do something really fantastic here. Cole can talk about it if he wants more about the proposal, but I, I don't want to get too into the recommendation part rather than just say, this is a high priority. This is something that we need to invest some money in. And just complete this area, we have West Davis Corridor almost finished and how awesome to have this great facility. Instead of a weed patch, it's a beautiful place for people to go in and enjoy and recreate. And like I said, I think I'll always be really proud of this area that the city took a chance to do something good and to do something lasting. So that's Trappers Field, north side. I'm going to let Cole-
I was going to say, you're tearing up over this.
I don't, can we put that on the record? Councilman Adams teared up the thought of Trappers Field, north side. And I'm going to let Cole just go with the conclusion here.
I'll try to be very brief. I, I just want to give my appreciation to our, the Parks and Recreation Board. It's been a interesting process as we started out in 2020 and as it's kind of had its bumps along the road, but I think we finally found kind of the groove and I'm grateful for Michelle and the rest of the board that's supportive of Parks Recreation in Kaysville. Before I get into the, this stuff up here, this is kind of what I wanted to end with, but just to maybe update on the, go backwards a little bit on the cemetery, the Angel of Hope statue. It's been ordered. They had raised, they've raised all the money that they needed to fund that. And so because the land behind the cemetery office, we currently have an RFP that was submitted and we're just now going through the selection process to select the in, design engineers to design the space. And so the funding for that will come to you in the next city council cycle on, as we get the design and how we can phase it and install that. So, but the Angel of Hope, we have a temporary location that we're going to put it in one of our cemetery lawns on the end, on a concrete base temporarily until that memorial garden area is completed. And so that's, that's exciting. Also with the, the trails and the, and kind of the importance of just attending the Davis County Active Transportation Focus Group today and how trails are so vital to, I think, to our society anymore. We actually have an RFP that was due today at 5:00 PM for the trailhead at Flint and Webb Lane to select the engineer to design that so that we can cope. And that's kind of a project that we're looking at for ramp funds for the next cycle. And so the engineers will be selected for that. So those are kind of some of the exciting things. I didn't want to, to have this report be all about the woe is us. And so we wanted to focus more on the things that are really good in Kaysville because we all know that we all have issues and things, but we're members of the NRPA, which is the National Recreation and Parks Association and, and part of the stuff that, the studies that they, that they've done. I just want to read the, the Parks and Recreation have three values that make them essential services to communities. And so as Parks and Recreation, we feel we are essential. Are we police? Are we fire? No. But I think the things that we do provide are essential in maybe a different way. But the one is economic value, two is health and environmental benefits, and three is just social importance. I want to give you an example of how important I think Parks and Recreation are to the city. And so Barnes Park, so this just came about this week. I was on a train, not a training, but basically a sales, a sales pitch from a company that does analytics. They use some data points with cell phones. They don't know who those cell phones belong to, but they know, they track these cell phones. It's kind of an AI type thing. And so part of the demo that they showed me was Barnes Park. That was kind of the one I wanted to focus on so they could, of course, they're trying to sell their product and want us to participate. But as we were doing that, I wrote down some notes for park, for Barnes Park. And this is from the last 12 months. So Barnes Park, the last 12 months had 301,000, 200 park visits. So there's 301,000 people that came to that park at different times throughout the year. Of those visitors, 98,000 of them were unique, meaning they, just unique visitors. And then for July 4th, we've always kind of wondered-
Yeah, that is interesting.
-what our number is. We've kind of pegged it between 10 and 15,000, but they have data that says that it was 16,500 people at Barnes Park for the red, white and boom that evening. And so as you can extrapolate that throughout the community, various parks, whether it's Pioneer Park or Heritage Park or other things, parks bring value to, to the city. Economic value, if you think of, you know, those 301,000 visits, as they come to the park, they're hopefully stopping at grocery stores and fast food and other things as they exit the park. Because not all of those visits are Kaysville City residents. So that's kind of our report this year. Unless you want to know how many sprinkler vals we have and how many acres of grass we mow and how many-
You're not going to tell us?
My, I can tell you. It's kind of, it's kind of depressing if you, we have about 6,500 sprinkler heads that we take care of. So, but anyway, so we're just grateful for the, the support of the city council for Parks and Recreation. And if you have any questions, we can answer anything that we didn't cover.
Cool. That was fantastic. Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Mitch. That was really, really, really great. I appreciate finding out all of the great details that maybe we don't pay attention to. Did you have a question?
Just before you left. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Just real quick, I'd be remiss. I mean, the only other person that came here to speak up public comment, are you familiar with that park?
Quell Crossing.
Yeah, the Quell Crossing, the section. And will you make sure to get his information?
Yeah. Yeah. Well, I think he actually reached out to Michelle. So I think one of the first steps would be to, to come and meet with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and kind of-
I mean, a dog park has always been something that people talk about, right?
It is. It's locations. I think they're a little bit more complex-
Yeah.
...than at first glance, just with the different nuances with small dogs, large dogs, the research we've done. But it's kind of interesting. Today, I was having a conversation with Justin, who are park superintendent about Quell Crossing because it's on 950 North, which is, you know, the new main entrance coming off of the West Davis Corridor and the boundary and just things that we need to be doing. And so part of our discussion is getting a master plan in place for Quell Crossing and very potentially that could be a location for a possible dog park. So I think for us, it's looking at the big picture of master planning and kind of trying to figure out where, where it makes sense. So, but yeah, we've got his information and having come present his idea to Parks and Rec Board on the later this winter.
Mayor, can I ask?
Absolutely. Yes.
So just one question. Obviously, because I enjoy mountain biking so much, and I know Bountiful has got this huge master plan and has been able to get quite a few grants for their biking master plan and what they're doing. And they're not just, they're doing it. I mean, I've been up there. They've, and I know that they've got it connected all the way from North Salt Lake clear to Farmington, but there's a big gap between Farmington and Kaysville above up in Fruit Heights. And I don't know, is there anything or is that anything on our plan or in our radar or what?
So I had a conversation with Darren for Fruit Heights yesterday because our, our park, I don't know if this slide will go back. Where our parking lot sits, that road is basically the boundary between Kaysville and Fruit Heights. And so talking to Darren from Fruit Heights, and they do have plans to make that connection into our parking lot, coming through the county. The county owns all the land below the shooting range and so they're working with the county currently to try to figure out a route to come down below the shooting range. So they're actively right now with, in Fruit Heights and-
But Mike has to ride his bike through the shooting range, right?
Well, yeah.
You, well, you really kind of almost do. I used to have to sneak through the Davis County shops and then I'd have to lift my bike over the fence by the parking lot.
So they're, they're trying to figure out a route to come down below the shooting range because it is a safety issue when the Bonneville Shoreline goes up above. So trying to route it down below, but it's just kind of coordinating with the county. But they were all involved in this ATP meeting today.
Okay.
And so I think there is a sense to, to have the connections.
I mean, they've just got some really neat things that have happened in the last few years. You can go from North Salt Lake to Mueller Park over to the Bee and then you can get all the way over to Farmington. You can get to Fruit Heights-
Yeah.
-but then there's a gap.
Yeah.
We can't get through.
You know, what people don't maybe don't understand with us and our trailhead, it's a direct connection to the Adams Canyon Trail via the Bonneville Shoreline. And so it's a, it's a great thing. And we added the bridge there about three years ago. It was pretty cool and that was a grant. And so, yeah, we are always looking for grant money.
Thanks. Thank you.
Yep. I didn't touch upon buildings. You probably didn't want to know about HVAC systems and custodial care and all that stuff. We won't bore you with that.
This was a great presentation. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks, Michelle. Thanks, Mitch. Thanks, you guys. Yeah, good job. Okay. All right. Conflicts of interest. Nothing? Okay. All right. Let's move to consent items, A and B. Does someone want to move that?
I'll make the motion that we approve consent items A and B.
Okay.
I'll say it.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. We'll start with Councilmember Hunt.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. Now we are moving on to council member reports. Does anyone have anything that they would like to discuss? No?
I'd like to go through all those slides again.
Oh, would you? Okay, that'd be fun. That'd be so fun.
Just kidding, kidding.
I will bring up one thing that I was talking to Jason about. We're going to create a community council board, similar to the Parks and Rec Board. So we're going to talk to Nick about that and put that in place and open it up to the public for applications so that people that want to bring ideas forward, because we do want to make sure that we're listening to people, you know, we get lots of requests. Michelle knows this because she was on council. We get lots of requests for, hey, what's going on here? What's going on here? We've got a great idea here. And it would be nice to be able to have sort of an organized way for people to be able to vet their ideas. And so we think that throughout the city, we've got Parks and Rec covered quite well. It would be nice to be able to have sort of an advisory board that can make recommendations to us for community-wide type things that people want to be interested in. We, you know, sometimes there's some great ideas that come off Facebook, you know, sometimes. And, and when, and when that happens, it's great. We want to be able to have a forum for people so that they're not just having to onesie twosie, ask each of us when they can catch us and, and we try to relay the information back and forth. So try to be communicating better that way and be a little bit more organized. So, yeah. So we want to do that. I was going to say, oh, yesterday, just quickly, I had an opportunity to sit on the transportation, third quarter transportation grant program. So was able to tour all of the, all of the cities within Davis County that are asking for grant money. Really interesting. It's really interesting to be able to go and say, okay, well, they need this road and this road is going to benefit three other communities. Regionally, it'll have this benefit and this impact economically. And so it's great. When we were talking about Fruit Heights, I was talking to Mayor Pullman and I, there is a huge desire to connect that trail. I think there's maybe a couple property owners too that we're, we're going to need to work with. But as we come together and, and we go and pitch it with Fruit Heights and say, okay, this is what we need together to be able to benefit the region, then those types of things get approved easier. So, so we're working on that. And then Abby, did you have anything you wanted to?
I mean, we met with Rotary yesterday. That was kind of a cool-
Oh, that's true. That's true.
Was that yesterday or the day?
That was Wednesday.
Yesterday. That was yesterday. Gosh, it's been two days since yesterday morning. But yeah, that was great. I loved meeting with them and hearing their ideas and, and excited to see some of the stuff they've got going on.
Right. Yeah. Rotary Club was great in Kaysville. We told them that we'll also encourage everyone to join because it's a great business service organization. It's not just for businesses, but it's a great service organization. Okay. Anything else? No? All right. Then we will, oh, sorry. Jason.
Sure. I just had a, a interesting thing. This morning, we had our employee-wide meeting and kind of started to roll out this mental health benefit. We've got Stuart Palmer, our full-time mental health therapist, who has been providing mental health services to the, the first responders, police and fire. As you probably remember, that position started almost two years ago with the grant and we're still able to keep that, that going right now. And he's got the capacity to open that up to other employees and I think it was exciting. He did an excellent job. Hats off to Stuart. If you know him, you've met him, you know, he's a really likable guy and he did a fantastic job. Got a lot of great comments from employees after the meeting. So we'll see how that goes, but I, I think that's just an awesome thing that the city is able to provide to, to the employees in addition to the employee assistance program. So just wanted to let you know that.
It is. Thank you. Thank you. All right. We have a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Okay. Do we have, yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. That concludes our city council meeting. Now we will open up our Kaysville Business Park Architectural Review Committee meeting. We are looking at consideration of a variance request for storage units for Aluminum Shingle Company at 525 North, 900 West in the business park. Now, I had an opportunity to go visit with them, I know Nate stopped by, Abby stopped by, great company over there in the business park. I'll turn the time over to Melinda to set this up for us. We've, we've discussed this before, and we're going to discuss it again.
Well, I wanted to be as brief as possible tonight. I do not see Mr. Stapp here, but real quickly, for anybody who may be watching, all right, here we go. This is where the property is, over off of Case Drive. It does have Holmes Creek that goes right through the middle of it. I think essentially, there are two variances requests this evening. One is for the building size to be less than 5,000 square feet, and the other one is for building materials. The company is an architectural, excuse me, the company is an aluminum shingle company that also allows those uses, or those shingles to be used as siding, not necessarily just on a roof. We went through this last time about the variance requests, but there are some reasons allowed in the Kaysville Business Park Guide for variances. I think this situation does fit within those parameters. Justifications that Mr. Stapp gave to the Architectural Review Committee for those variance requests would just be, again, the creek, there's various easements that cut through the property, there's a rail line easement, there's a power line easement as well. He also presented this concept initially with that outside storage, and the plans for the box culvert to go across the creek, and felt like, you know, he wasn't told that this, at that time, that this building would be smaller than what was allowed. And the visibility of the, the building really is quite limited. I think essentially, you're only going to see it probably from the I-15 when you are southbound, and then, you know, if you drive all the way into the street. It's really tucked back behind. I am just going to skip through all of this unless the committee wants to review this, but at our last Architectural Review Committee meeting, the committee wanted to solicit input from the property owners over there. So, we, prior to making a decision on the variance, so we mailed out a notice to all of the property owners over there, 42 of them, and of course, the Aluminum Shingle Company is one of those 42. I had one phone call, a gentleman who was not in favor of the variance, mostly because he felt like the design shown and having four bays, four bay doors and walls segmenting the building made it look like he would rent them out as storage units. At the last meeting, Mr. Stapp indicated that he was not going to do that, was just going to use them for their business purposes. But I just wanted to bring your attention to this item on, that's highlighted in yellow, and when we sent the letter out, we did just say, look, if we don't hear a response from you, we'll just kind of consider that your blessing. So I think if you look at the numbers, really, by default, we had 41 people that were either in favor of the variance, or didn't care enough, I guess, to voice an opinion. Mr. Stapp also received this letter, and this was not, I did not understand this, I don't think it came up really until the letter was sent, but he also not only wants to have a variance for the building size, but also wants to have a variance for the, the building materials. And so, he indicated in an email that he would not want to construct the buildings if they can't use their own products. So I did forward to the committee yesterday some of the reasons why he felt like it was a good product to use, wind rating of 165 miles an hour, and that's a lifetime type of a product. So, with that, I will just let the committee know, there's a couple options here, you can approve the variance for the materials and the square footage and the building, or obviously you could deny the variance, you could approve one variance and deny the other. So whatever questions you have, I'll try and answer.
All right, thank you. I will just mention that in touring the facility, he makes these materials out of different, I mean, it's really, it's nice quality material. I, you have a sample, and it comes in different colors, I don't know what, which color he's going to choose for this building, but it's, it's really nice, high-quality material, and I feel really comfortable, not that I get to vote on this, but I feel comfortable with, with this. So, how do you all feel, committee members, that get to vote? If you feel okay, we can move on.
Yeah.
If you, if you feel great.
All right, okay, then.
Oh, maybe one question.
Yes.
Did, in the, in that letter, did we, because I know one of the things that we had talked about during our last, that meeting, was also sending out some type of a questionnaire, finding out if the owners are interested in us stopping. Did, was that part of the letter?
No, it wasn't.
Oh, okay.
I wanted to keep them separate.
Separate, okay.
Yeah, so we will, Mindy and I actually just talked about this today, but we'll, we'll put something together in the next few weeks, and, and I think just maybe a simple four or five question survey, send mail out a QR code, and, and hopefully get.
Awesome.
Yeah, so, the one gentleman that did call, I talked to him about it, and he said, no, I don't want to do it, which, which means his preference.
He doesn't want to be on it, or he doesn't want us to switch.
He prefers that the council.
Does it?
Yeah.
That's fine, yeah.
So.
Okay, cool.
We'll, we'll come back to you with that feedback.
Great.
Do you want me to make a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consideration of a variance request, variances, is it variances? Variancy? Request for storage units for Aluminum Shingle Company at 524 North, 900 West.
Is that for, that's for both of them?
Yes, for both of them.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Councilmember Blackham.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passes. Oh, committee member. Thank you, committee members, that was fantastic. Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.